The following was recorded in front of a live studio audience at the Studio 21 Podcast Cafe. This is the United Podcast Network.
The following program is closed captioned for the thinking impaired.
By tomorrow, I will rule the world!
You think he's gone? He's not gone! That's the whole point! He's never gone!
Is this some radical new therapy?
You see?
Welcome to the paying attention podcast, a special edition of the paying attention podcast. High above two guys smoke shop here at Studio 21 Podcast Cafe. And we are, we have a great treat for you guys tonight. We have the West End City Council candidates in Methuen. This is because we have to pay for the time here. We've got some four great sponsors who have kicked in to help us do this debate to bring the information to you. So if you get a chance, please patronize them Royal House of Roast Beef on Lowell Street. By the way, not only just, not only the greatest roast beef, like way better than Harrison's, but I go there for the clam roll. I live in North Andover. I drive all the way over to the West End of Methuen to get clam rolls from there. They're pretty good. Don's Sign Tech. If you've got a business, you've got a house, you want to sign, give Don's Sign Tech a call. Rich and Abby Larishell, private individuals, not a business, but they decided they were going to kick in. And we had a $100 anonymous donor who wanted to kick in, but didn't want anybody to know who he was. We also are sponsored tonight by Angelo over there. You know Angelo over there from A&amp;M Auto Body over there? You get something wrong with your car over there, you bring it to him, he takes care of it for you. He's a good friend and he sponsors the show no matter what we do. So we want to thank him. I'm gonna, the rules are very easy, very simple for you guys. This is a real debate. It's not a forum like you're used to that they call a debate. It's not going to be 30 seconds for a response. Like, you know, what do you think of war and peace? 30 seconds, go. I'm, I'm just going to throw a topic out. At the beginning, I'm going to ask each of you to just kind of introduce yourself. No time limit, just be mindful of the time. And then I'm going to throw a topic out and whoever wants to answer, talk to each other though, don't talk to me. I'm just kind of like the referee. I'm only going to step in if someone's not getting enough time or someone's getting too much time. Or, you know, if somebody says something totally outrageous and I need to follow up on it. So why don't we just start at the other end? Why don't you introduce yourself, tell people who you are, why you're running for the West End City Council seat?
I'm Jeri Ann Batel and I am running for one of the seats in the West End. I've lived in Methuen my entire life and I felt that it was time for just a regular person, not a politician, to run for one of the seats and try to help make Methuen better than what's going on right now.
Bill?
I'm Bill Bryant. I've lived in Methuen for the past 25 years. I come from Lawrence, although I was born at the Bonseco Hospital, which was in Methuen. So technically I was born-
We'll give you a pass on that.
Thank you. First of all, I want to thank the sponsors, obviously Two Guys Smoke Shop and the Valley Patriot and the rest of the sponsors, you know, being involved in so many community activities, sponsorship and donations are a key for anything. So obviously thank that and Rich that's here and the family that sponsored. As I said, Bill Bryant, I'm a father of three. My wife Pamela Bryant was in banking for 30 plus years and now works in the Methuen Public Schools in the Marsh as a program assistant. My three kids all went through the Marsh and one graduated Methuen High School. The other two are a senior and a sophomore next year. As I said, I've been active, Methuen baseball, Methuen lacrosse, Methuen football. I'm currently the president of Methuen Boosters and the MAIC Vice President, which we've raised over $150,000 for Methuen High School Athletics. So, you know, my involvement within the city of Methuen for the past 25 years has been, has been pretty, pretty large.
Frank, you're up.
My name is Frank Yallow, born and raised in Methuen. I currently sit on the Housing Authority Board. I've been an elected official for the past six years. I am the chairman of the board now and I have an interest in city politics. And we have an open seat here in the West End of Methuen and I think I can bring some fresh ideas to the board and help, help Methuen move forward and resolve these old issues that we have clouding us.
Great. Hopefully we can talk about some of those. Go ahead.
Thanks, Tom. My name is Mike Samad and I want to thank Stuart 21 and Valley Patriot for hosting this and also the sponsors. Without you, we couldn't be here. So thank you very much. I'm 24 years in Methuen. I have three children in the Marsh School, Alyssa, Adriana and Christian. My wife Jen, she works at the Great Lawrence Book as a guidance counselor. I decided, I'm also a proud veteran of the United States Air Force, four and a half years.
Thank you for your service.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you. So I decided to run because I got involved early on in a situation in the West End that we all know about and kind of got in tune with what's going on in Methuen. So I thought with my experience, my organizational skills and my ability to communicate and get things done, I decided to run and try to make a difference in Methuen and move us forward.
Ally?
I'm Ally Saffy. I'm 26. I was born and raised in Methuen. I went to Methuen Public Schools up until eighth grade. I'm running because, like Mike said, I started going to meetings and speaking at meetings. And with the issue that we all were going for, I started seeing other issues unravel and then the news cycle taking over Methuen. I think it's, a lot of people were looking for residents to run for positions who don't have conflicts of interest and ties and that's why I'm running. I think I'm good at holding people accountable and good at like uncomfortable conversations, which I think is kind of a point that Methuen has to do to deal with problems.
Great. So for those of you at home, if you live in Methuen, if you're in the West End of Methuen, these are your candidates for city council. Two of them will get elected in November. Four of them will go on from the primary to the final ballot. That means one of them is going to get knocked off. Hopefully you guys will have a good enough time that you'll come back after the primary. We also podcast audio. So while you guys are talking, if you start talking to each other, could you at least say what your name is so the people listening audio and not watching the video will know who it is that's speaking and we won't confuse people? Let's start right away with the elephant in the room, right? Because we know it's going to come up. Why not start off with it? The Sweetheart Inn has been a debacle. It's been very controversial. The owner of the Sweetheart Inn wanted to put a certain number of apartments in there. Some of the residents complained. There was all kinds of controversy. Why don't you guys, whoever wants to go first, talk about what you thought of what happened and if you were a city council, how you would have handled it? Anybody?
Well, I'll start if no one wants to start. My name's Mike Samad. I was, I'm an abutter of the Sweetheart Inn project. My family and I, we moved there approximately six years ago and we paid for that zoning in the West End, which is residential, rural residential. So with two acres, you're allowed one lot. Sweetheart Inn is on four acres, so they're allowed two lots. And they wanted to put 15 homes on four acres. So that was 13 homes more than they wanted to. So our whole fight was not about the history or denying a over 55, you know, development. It was all about just adhering to the zoning. And I think the mayor came in, I think there were some conflicts and right away he took office and rubber stamped it and took the case out of land court and brought it back to, you know, city government. And luckily the Community Development Board got it right and they pushed it right back to land court once they appealed it on the last day. So that's-
How would you have handled it though?
I would have stuck by the experts in this case, which is the Community Development Board. They got it right. They had three lawyers on the board. They had Mark Engle, who specialized in land court disputes in Boston. And they got it right. They did the homework. They denied it knowing they were going to sue. And of course the mayor undermined them and pulled it right out from under there.
Anybody else?
I want to jump in, Bill Bryant, and not trying to throw a shot across, but you know, I believe everyone's in a butter here except myself. So technically, as we're talking about conflicts, that would be a situation that, that I would probably be the only one on the city council from the West End that could vote on that, on that particular situation. Cause I don't, I don't abut the property. However, I do agree with Mike, you know, 14 to 15 units in a four acre lot is just, that is not what's best for, for that neighborhood. And if you travel down the street, it just doesn't, doesn't make sense. But I think that's one of the reasons why I'm getting involved in as well. There needs to be more communication with the community. There needs to be more communication from the community to City Hall. And I think that's what's lost. And that's one of the things that I hope to bring back. There's a lot of active people in Methuen that just are not getting their voice heard at City Hall or at these meetings. And I think they've lost trust. So-
How would you have handled it?
As far as my vote?
Yeah.
The vote never came to the city council other than the historic. And I think that was the mistake because, you know, the mayor, you know, basically cut that off of the pass. So I'm very pleased with what happened, but if the, if the vote came to me as far as the 14 units, I would have not supported that.
Anybody else?
No, I wouldn't have supported it either.
Yeah, I wouldn't have supported it. And also on that, not only is it four acres, one acre is wetlands mostly. So two houses wouldn't really even fit there. And most of the neighbors, from my understanding, were okay with him having two houses, which was kind of an agreement. And instead the mayor made a, an agreement in secret or whatever. And then he held the community development, like force gave them, you know, a strong hand and told them that they had to do it his way or they were going to court. And I think the fact that people resigned over it speaks volumes. I'm not sure it would come back to council so that people can vote on it. I think if it comes back to the table, it's going to the Community Development Board. Just like how every time it does come back, the developers come back with, I'm forgetting what it's called, but they're supposed to meet a certain amount of expectations. That's the agreement with the mayor, which is like sidewalks, the way that they do runoff with water. And rather than coming back with actual meeting the expectations they're supposed to, they actually get rid of them every time and they have less, they have more houses and they bring back less to the community, which is crazy. And on top of it, we don't have sewer on our streets. So this development would be getting sewer. They're getting water from a very strange way, going through the woods. It's kind of just a mess in general. It's kind of sad that the deal has gotten this far. But I mean, our street's pretty fast going. I don't think we need a development in that tiny little lot.
Frank, you've been quiet.
Right. Okay. I'm not a director butter, but I do live close to the Sweetheart Inn. I think that we should stand behind with-
Just pull the mic in a little bit more, Frank.
I think we should stand behind with the Community Development Board-
It twists.
What their, what their vote was. It's a two acre minimum.
Sorry, I don't want to, I'll give you more time. Go ahead.
How's that better?
That's perfect. Good.
I think we should stand behind with the Community Development Board rule. It's a two acres zoning. It is what it is. I mean, if it was different, it could be different, but it's not. I mean, you start bending rules for one person, what would happen if everybody on that road that's got more than two acres plus, I'm ready to tear down my house. I want to put in a, I want to put 10 condos in my backyard. I feel bad for Mike and Leanne. They're nice people and I realize this is their golden parachute on their way out, but rules are rules. It is what it is, you know?
Go ahead.
Can I follow Frank?
Bill Bryant.
Thanks, Bill Bryant. Thank, that's one of the issues that I think comes up when you talk about politics is, they are nice people. I don't know them very well, but you have to remove the name sometimes. And I get it. That's something that they're trying to invest in. You know, from what I heard, you know, retire and that would be their nest egg. But when it comes to a community and what's going to impact the citizens, you have to remove the names and go by the rules and the expectations. And that's what I felt like was missing throughout the whole conversation. You know, at one point I heard that even the fire trucks wouldn't have been able to, to get down the street. So those are the things that I feel that, that I want to talk about tonight is how, how as a city council on the West End, for someone that's not in politics, this is our first time, how are we going to be a voice for the people to make sure that those facts are not being left out and those are being talked about at city council meetings, at community development meetings, and the people of the community are hearing what's going on? Because I think the mixed messages and what's turned people, people off and they just stop listening and then things like this pass.
So there was a lot of talk about this project that there was some kind of backroom deals going on. Do you guys have any thoughts on that?
Well, Frank Yallow, I honestly don't know if there was any backdoor deals going on, to be honest with you. I know that they tried to push the project through. They tried several different approaches to do it. They showed us plans, they didn't show us plans. Like Ms. Saffy said, that they came before the board and it seemed like there was less restrictions. The more houses they put in or the less houses they put in, that the restrictions started coming down. No granite curbing, sidewalks probably weren't warranted out there because, but no, no granite curbing. The infrastructure was poor. They were going to come to our woods with the water. We have no storage on the road. I mean, I mean, if they would have said, hey, look, we're going to put in X amount of houses, but we're going to run storage down the road for everybody or, or just try to work with us just a little bit more. There was no meetings. There was no dialogue. You know, it seemed like that it was, it was just getting pushed right through.
Well, and that's why I think a lot of people think that it was a backroom deal. I wasn't in the backroom, so I don't know, but I, I'm interested in what the rest of you guys think.
I think there was a backroom deal from reading the minute notes and being at meetings. I'm pretty sure in one of the minutes notes with the community development, I mean, it wasn't like a bad backroom deal. And I only say that in the meaning that the mayor is allowed-
Is there a good backdoor deal?
He's, well, he's allowed to like negotiate and he's allowed to make deals. And it's in his power, but I mean, it was a bad deal for the residents. So I mean, it was done behind closed doors and it wasn't, it's not like he came out and said, hey, I made this deal. It was just, he did it and then he brought it to the community development and kind of expected them to just say, okay, well, we'll sign off.
Anybody else?
Yeah, Mike Samad. I think the biggest thing that people had problems with was all the conflicts and the dirty politics right from the beginning. So, and I brought them up on several occasions when I was active, fighting that project and, you know, they reeked to high heaven right from the beginning. And it seemed like a rubber stamp because he came right into office and pulled it right from land court. Never even spoke to the Community Development Board who did their homework. I would think if you were the mayor, you would talk to your experts, the people that are appointed, that are elected, that know what they're doing before you act like that. And he didn't do that. So he wanted to, you know, pull it the 11th hour because he had to and he did and it backfired. So we're hoping that, you know, they do what they've been doing and they do the right thing.
Anybody else?
Just to final, you know, this is Bill Bryant, just to follow up. I think the members that jumped in and did volunteer and get elected, I think as Mike just said, they did the right thing. And I think that's what is happening in Methuen time and time again, is people are stepping up. But at what point does that end? You know, at what point is, is people just going to stop fighting? And I think we're in that, that little era right now where just, there's not enough people volunteering because of so many little issues that have come up that have turned them away. And in general voters, I think is the same thing. And that's what I want to bring some excitement to the West End. A forum like this to, to get out there and get your name out there and have conversations, you know, walking the streets and talking to people there, talking about two or three things in, you know, in the West End. And this is one of them.
Before we move on, Joey, you've been very quiet.
I'm just taking it all in. I'm not a director butter there, but I've, you know, I live pretty close. I mean, the streets around there are horrible, you know, the cars are flying down there. And to add more of that to that side of the town or city would be horrible. You know, every time there's open land, someone wants to build something. And then it really needs to come back to the people, you know, in something like that. They should say, hey, why don't we just put it to the people and put it to a vote? Because no one gets a chance to speak except who's within that circle.
There's a whole bunch of elephants in this room. Let's just go right to the next one, right? Why, why dance around? The police contract has been very controversial. The city council took a number of votes. They, they tried to challenge the, the MOU that the mayor tried to put in to try and negotiate. If you were, in fact, one city counselor, I think actually said at the table, I voted for it, but I didn't read it. I'd love, I'd love for you guys to, to address all of that. How would each of you have handled the, the situation with the police contract? And as, if you could work in somehow what you would have done with, with Mr. Kelly, who, I mean, I think everybody pretty much agreed at this point was probably at the center of that. Walked away with a golden parachute.
Frank Yallow, I don't know so much of a golden parachute. I think that being a police officer in any community is having a bullseye on the back of your head, to be honest with you. You got to give these guys credit where credit's due. But I think that the city council should have read the contract. Somebody should have went through it and dotted their i's and crossed their d's. And that's where I think the ball got dropped. So if I put together a great deal for me and I slid it over to you and I worked it out to my behalf, right? Or to my guys' behalf, and if you signed off on it, I mean, the city council should be held accountable. I mean, you've got an attorney there, you've got a, you've got a city auditor. I mean, what happened? Where did we go wrong? What happened?
No one's held accountable.
Where's the, where's the bottom line contract? Did, I mean, I never got to view the contract. So how do we even know where the real numbers really are? Do you know what I mean? Show me the W2s. That's what I keep saying.
I have lots of opinions on this, but this is not the forum for my opinions. What do you guys?
Mike Samad here. Being a police officer for the past 24 years and I've made rank, so I deal in the management portion of law enforcement. The fact that that contract, which I think is outrageous, was presented to the city council is unbelievable.
Just the fact that it was presented, you think was-
Exactly. Yeah. Because there's no doubt in my mind, no one knows what the true numbers are, but they're exorbitant and they're unrealistic and it's going to bankrupt the city if we don't fix that. Then the fact that it was, then rubber stamped by the, by the city council. If that was a, say a company, a private company, everyone would have been fired. Everyone would have been fired. But now people want to move forward and continue the saga, so to speak. So I think we have to work together as a city council and as a mayor, okay? And a police department. We have a great police department, but I think there's, there's some mismanagement that needs to be dealt with. I think in the future, we should do a comparison analysis with other police departments, the same demographics. And also maybe hire a police management audit company to come in and do a complete audit of the police department. Say, hey, this is the fact, this is what we need to do, because this is what other departments do. And I think that will help everyone move forward. So we have a great police department. We just have to get together and everybody has to give in.
I think Bill wanted in on this.
Yeah, no, Bill Bryant, clearly I think Frank said it perfectly. You know, for, for this particular department in the city, they have a bullseye right away. Everybody loves the police until they're, you know, behind you and the lights go on. And then, you know, the stress goes, the stress goes up because, you know, you could possibly get a ticket, but at the end of the day-
And if Mike pulls you over, he's not letting you go.
He's not letting you go.
Especially now.
Now I have to.
Yeah. I think especially, you know, in a city like Methuen that is, that is, has grown so much. I think Jerry just said town to city. I think a lot of people forget that. It's really important that the patrolmen on the street have the trust and the faith of the community. And that's the part for me that is really concerning because these guys and ladies and women of the law enforcement are in the front line. And right now there's, you know, every house I knock on, what do you think of the police contract? And I love the police. They do a fantastic job and any type of involvement I have, their, their class act, all of the events, all of the things that they're, they're part of. But this is their, this is their black cloud right now. And that's, I guess, what goes back to my concern with Methuen city government is these things should not be happening. As you hear the discussion, you know, it was zero, two and two is what the mayor that signed the contract said. So is the council where they lied to? You know, you brought up the auditor, you brought up the attorney that was there. Who was in the room? There's so many questions that there's no answer to, and that's what concerns me. So to answer a question like that, not having all the facts, not having all the facts when it has been live on television, those meetings. There's so many executive council meetings, there's so many attorneys. I would have a hard time answering. I would like for the city of Methuen to support the police department. I want them to have the best equipment. I want them to have the safest equipment. But I also want them to make a wage that is comparable to other cities and towns and keep it fair and not put our city in a, in a position to have to cut from the school department, have to cut from the fire department. That to me is a problem.
Once we learned what had happened, how would you guys have handled it? I'm going to let the ladies go because neither one of them got in on this. How would you have handled it once, once it was revealed? Once we found out that it wasn't zero, two and two, the mayor tried to do an MOU, the council wanted to do a restructuring. How would you have then handled it? Like what would your leadership position have been once we got there? And I guess we'll start with Ally.
Well, first off, the guy, the brush guy, he came-
Brush guy.
He came to council and asked every, every meeting for names on who was told it was a bad contract. And nobody, everyone just, nobody wanted to give him a name, which I think is like, problem one is that there's no accountability. So there's people sitting on council who knew that it was a bad contract. There's evidence that there, no one read it. It's in the OIG report. So I mean, you have to hold those people accountable. Like we're in the situation we're in now because people didn't read this. They didn't take into account how it would affect us in the future. And also the justification for this contract from even what the Superior's Union Facebook says, it's that we have a higher violence rate now than we did prior. So I've been looking at the statistics for like the FBI of our city and I don't see that. It's, it's, it goes up and down, but there's no like significant jump that would justify this. And then on top of that, the superior officers, like I have a lot of questions, I guess, regarding it. Meaning, so who's called for us to a scene? Cause I, my impression is that it's patrolmen. So where are their raises? Cause it's, it's just weird too. And then there's, you have them talking about laying off canine dogs. So you have already paid and put money into training these dogs. Why would you lay them off? It just seems like we don't even know what we're using our money for. And then we're just so likely to just say, eh, well, we're cutting, we gotta lay off people, so let's lay off the front line.
How would you have handled once we found out? Would you have, would you have gone with the mayor's MOU? Would you have gone with restructuring the department? Would you have a different idea?
I think restructuring the department, like them taking that on was a little strong. I think they should restructure their apartment, but they should do it. I think that-
The police, you mean?
Yeah. I think that they need to be held accountable too. So I think outside parties doing it is, is a little strange because we don't, we're not working with them. We don't know really how it works, but I, there's no way I would keep giving them money.
Joey, I'm going to give you tons of time because everybody else could get a lot of time on this question. If you want it, if you don't want it, that's fine.
Yeah, no, no, that's fine. I mean, I don't like the fact that they're saying that they didn't read the contract because that just seems like the easy way out instead of taking on responsibility. Because anyone that has a contract, even for themselves, you're going to read the whole thing. You're not going to say, well, I'm just going to leave it up to the attorney. And we're just kind of pushing a ball around and really not answering the, really the big deal. And the police budget is embarrassing. We're on the news constantly and it's really sad.
Some people say Methuen's the new Lawrence.
Exactly. No, but seriously, it's getting to the point where you're saying, where do you live? Oh, Methuen. You know, oh, you were on the news last night. Well, you know what? I mean, someone has to be accountable for something. And just passing the buck saying, well, I didn't read the, the contract. I'm sorry. That's not a good enough answer for me, not as a taxpayer. You know, if we're going to be dishing out all this kind of money, you'll look at the cars that they're driving around. I mean, last time I checked, when you go to a job, you bring your car, you get in the car and you leave. I wouldn't mind having half the vehicles that are being driven around on our dollar. So I mean, it's, it's dangerous that we have gone to this, this far with the, the budget. You know, it's, it's scary as a taxpayer because you're like, when are they going to hit us again? You know, someone needs to be responsible and held accountable for this instead of just coming up with excuses after excuses.
Go, go ahead.
Just, I want to address that. So having grown up in Lawrence, you know, Lawrence High School graduate, there was a lot-
Don't hit me.
There was a lot of good people in Lawrence, you know.
Nobody just picked-
And I'm going to throw a compliment to Mike, you know, I have a lot of, a lot of, you know, buddies and people that are Lawrence firemen and policemen. I think one of the issues with Lawrence is there's not enough people that have direct roots to the city. There's a lot of transient, a lot of people that are moving in and out. That's my concern of Methuen.
That's what's happening.
If we don't start to take what, what is going on serious with the disconnect with the government and the communities, you know, west, east, central, and the entire city, there's a potential that people are going to start moving out and the people that are moving in aren't as invested. And you're going to see a decline in, in the, in the, in the clubs and the activities and things like that. And that is a concern, but I think we're many, many years away from that. But going back to the police contract, I don't think there was enough conversation about the facts. You know, people keep saying, reading the contract. Are we talking about the police contract? Cause if we are, that's not the city council's responsibility. The city's council responsibility is to vote on the overall city budget. And I'm pretty sure when I watched the meeting, that budget was not, was voted to not be allowed to be voted at in sections. They voted it as a whole. And I think that's something that was a concerning to me and I would have not allowed that. That would have been something that I would have, you know, definitely caused a little bit more of a stink, not, you know, hit you, Tom, or anything. But I would have, you know, that to me is a problem, that that was, that that was a specific budget that was not allowed to be looked at in sections and it was approved as a whole. And I think those are the things that the, the citizens of Methuen need to hold their city councilors accountable for. But what if you're a two or three of those city councilors that said, no, we want to, we want to open that budget up and they're voted out? And I think those are the things that people need to go back. Those conversations are online. You can go back and look at a city council meeting and I think there's too much of, of, you know, this entire group did this or that. Go back, the evidence is there. Your city councilors that are incumbents are interviewing for their next job on TV, live in front of you. And if you don't take the time to look at that, but you have an opinion, that's troubling to me.
So one of the things that bothers me, I don't live in Methuen, so I have no right to be bothered by any of this. But, but I drive through Methuen and one of the things that really bothers me is all of the development going in. I watched what happened in Lawrence when Lawrence fell and one of the things that was going on was too much development, especially for low income. What do you guys think about the development situation in Methuen and how would you handle it, whoever wants to go first?
I think the zoning laws, Frank Yallow, I'm sorry. I think the zoning laws should be in place where they are. You know what I mean? I mean, like the perfect example, where we live in the West End, it's a two acre minimum. We need to keep it to a two acre minimum. This way we can have some space in between us. So we're not overdeveloping. And then now you've got more kids in schools. You've got to hire more fire department, more police. I mean, everything goes up. I think that it should be held accountable. I mean, there's always-
I see these monstrosities going up, but I look at it and it's actually happening in my hometown in North Andover. And it worries me about what's going to happen in 10 years. What do you guys think?
Bill Bryant, my point is these people moving in, what are they moving in for? There's not enough, you know, restaurants. There's, when I say restaurants, not chain restaurants. There's not enough places to go, a brewery or a winery or, or things that are unique or different. We're leaving Methuen to go to other places that have these new businesses that are bringing a tax income to the city. I think we're around 12% and I'm not a politician. This is all new. So I'm trying to do my homework as we go, but most cities and towns that have a, a proper economic development, around 20, 21% of income coming in for businesses, we're around 12%. And that's what the- And that's what the burden is falling on the taxpayers. And those are the things that people should be speaking out about is where are the businesses that should be coming to Methuen to supporting all of these 55, you know, communities? Because as a, as a resident, I wanna eat at Butter Bang, I wanna eat at local places and, and support them that they're also supporting the athletes, they're also supporting these, these clubs and.
And Royal House of Roast Beef.
Royal House of Roast Beef, absolutely. Manos, I mean, the list goes on. All these little mom and shop places are truly supporting, but we're not supporting them by bringing in other businesses that are workers, that they're gonna be buying lunch during the day. There should be more businesses on 110 that will go to that restaurant, you know, the sub shop and, and buy the food, not just you coming from North Andover.
Yep.
So.
Ally.
I think that, yeah, we are overdeveloping like crazy and even more so, I'm kind of confused why we're overdeveloping because I see more houses for sale now than I've ever seen. There are houses for sale on every street. It seems like people are moving out, not looking to move in. So rather than build more houses, you might wanna find people to live in the ones we already have. I mean, we, otherwise we're gonna have really, really, really big taxes coming because, I mean, who's gonna pay for all this? We have school issues, we have all these budget issues and why would anyone want to move into our town? It like, we have to fix things and move up before we expect, and either way, I mean, like for our, our district, we do have two acre zoning and I think that we all like that. Like it's, we live in a town, we don't real, we live in a city, I know it's called that, but we really live in a town. Like our side, it's more homey. Like people used to have like farms and walk horses down our road. Like I remember that. And the other side of Methuen, I know that, I've actually had councilors tell me like, almost as if it's like a, I don't know, like a competition? They were saying like, well, we're overdeveloping our, our side. Well, so you don't get to do it to us. Like stop overdeveloping your side. Like you're just getting out of control and it, it has a huge impact on the schools. We have a ton of kids in our schools. And I mean, it's good that we have kids in our schools, but if we can't manage our money and stuff, I mean, where's our education going? It just, it impacts a lot.
Let somebody else.
All right, give me some time. Well, I think we also need to take care of the, the west end. We, I mean, we have Forest Lake that's falling apart. You know, I mean, I remember when I was a kid and we used to go up there, they had, you know, kids working at Forest Lake in that little hut selling food. It was clean. When you drive down there, it's a mess, the Methuen ski hill, that needs to be cleaned up. I mean, that's still our side of town where we can have people enjoy it now. When you say Forest Lake, they're like, oh, you're going to Forest Lake? Well, we need to clean it up. I mean, clean up the ski hill and do something about it. I mean, we could put anything there, a slide or a small ski hill to kinda let the kids stay, you know, within our side.
It seems like what you guys are saying is that you want less residential development, more business development. And so whoever has none a chance.
Mike Samard, that's correct, Tom. Unfortunately, revenue comes from either taxes or development. Right now, there's too many tax breaks being doled out and for what? Cause our taxes keep going up, we're seeing all these toll brother places pop up out of nowhere, but we get no bank for the buck in Methuen. So I think we gotta get someone like a Joe Farrow to come in and do what he's doing in Salem, on a smaller scale of course, because we don't have the land. But I think downtown needs some redevelopment, we need parking down there and we need to draw. Like Bill said, no one wants to come to Methuen. You get, you get fast food joints, but we, we need, you know, like a Linfield type of place or, or now the Tuscan Village. So I think with the right people, we can get it done.
Or Royal House of Roast Beef.
Well, a great place.
I, I just wanna respond to that. I, I think as a city council, as a government, you, you have to come up with creative ways to get people to wanna move in. So I never said people don't wanna move here. I think people are moving here and I think the statistics will show you have your, your move in, move out as people get older and younger families move in. I think we have a phenomenal school system. I think you see by whenever the school budget's being, you know, affected or, or criticized, you see hundreds of people show up, you see picketing going on because there, there is a phenomenal school system in Methuen. We just talked about how great of a police department we have, but not for the cost that we're talking about this contract. And I think that's the part that scares me is we have good infrastructure. It's what the city has dropped as far as the ball in having a capital plan, which we're just starting to do now, which to me is baffling that you could have a city that doesn't have a capital plan that can take care of its infrastructure. But how are we not advertising coming into Methuen, which would actually attract businesses to wanna be here? And I think that's where we're dropping the ball.
Well, staying out of the news would be one great thing.
Thank you, Jerry. Anybody else that hasn't on this? This is good. I want to remind everybody that this is the West End City Council debate for the West End of Methuen and we are sponsored by Angelo Memolo over there, the A&amp;M Auto Body. That's how he talks, so I make fun of him because he's my friend. The, the Royal House of Roast Beef with amazing roast beef, but also has some really, really good seafood plates, especially the clam rolls, which was one of my favorite. Dawn Seintec, Dawn is amazing for us. She's always in whatever we're doing, whether it's police rallies or debates, she's always sponsoring our stuff. Rich and Abby LaRochelle, who, who kicked in a hundred dollars to help us pay for the time here today. And we also had an anonymous donor for a hundred dollars. The, the, the homeless issue in the Merrimack Valley seems to be a really horrible thing, which should I guess go without saying, but it doesn't. But one of the things that I notice when I'm out working with the homeless is that many of them aren't from Lawrence. A lot of them are from Methuen. And we look at the surrounding communities around Lawrence and what we see is that people who paid taxes their whole life, owned a maybe a half a million dollar home, paid taxes, did the right thing, then their company goes under, they end up homeless. There's nothing in those communities, there's no services in those communities, especially Methuen, North Andover where I live, Andover, those communities that are but Lawrence, to help their residents when they become homeless. And it seems to me like we have a senior center in every community, we have a youth center in almost every community. Why doesn't Methuen have some kind of services for people who lived in Methuen their whole lives and become homeless? Because what happens is they go to Lawrence. And then so you concentrate all of the homeless people, some of whom were addicted, have serious mental problems, or just are down on their luck, and you're putting them all in the same place. And then guys like Mike Samard have to go around and they have to like, you know, they have to arrest them or move them along or whatever. So I, I guess as, as a homeless advocate, one of the things that's always perplexed me is why Lawrence has all of these things shoved into them by the state and why the surrounding communities aren't taking responsibility for their own citizens when they become homeless? And I'd like each of you, if you could address that in whatever way you want.
I'll go first, Bill Bryant. I think part of the, the reason Lawrence does that is the federal money that comes in. So if you look at the comparison of the money that's brought into Lawrence compared to those surrounding communities, we're, we're not even holding, holding water to them as far as what they're getting. So which the 55 plus communities that are being developed, that's a concern I have. What's gonna happen when these folks get to an age where they can't afford their $500,000, their $400,000 home? Because those, those pieces aren't in place. And I do wanna give a shout out to Michael Gorman, cause.
Great guy.
He is, he is someone that, you know, that I've met and talked to and he is doing absolute on the ground work, whether it's in Lawrence, Methuen. Once again, those are the citizens that should be being supported, not being shut out, not being pushed around. I think we have a great senior center in Methuen, but you mentioned a community center. And, and a few years ago, I went onto the city of Methuen, city hall website and there was a picture of a former mayor at the Lawrence Boys Club, talking about the 200 to 300 Methuen kids that were at the Lawrence Boys Club and how great that was. And for me, I was embarrassed.
Right.
Because Lawrence has their need. There should have been 200 to 300 kids from Lawrence in that boys' club, not kids from Methuen, traveling across the city to go there. So that's another concern because if you take care of the kids and you give them proper programming and you get them through school and educate them, and then you're responsible for your elderly, let the people that are, that are 30s, 40s, 50s, 60s, do their job, get your job, you know, do your savings and you take care of the kids and the elderly. And I think that's something that we're disjointed right now in Methuen.
Frank?
I think that's a great thing that you brought up, that we, we don't really have anything in place for the homeless. I know in Methuen, I sit on the Housing Authority Board, like I mentioned earlier, we take fantastic care of our elderly, just want you to know that.
Good to know.
Yeah, we do. We really.
We're not gonna hold on, move to Methuen.
We go above and beyond for them. We have a great board over there. But I think that's, that's something, that's, that's a great idea. I think that that might be an idea, a new idea that could be brought to the board, you know, to new, to a new city council, for somebody to work on. And we have some buildings that are vacant here in Methuen. Why don't we transform these buildings into maybe like a little youth center or something or, or a little shelter or something? You know what I mean? And give these people a time limit, say, you know, if something really bad, look into their situation because you have to look into it. Not everybody's jumping on the bus for a free meal and a, and a warm place to sleep. But I think it's a great idea. I mean, I, I'm kinda surprised, living in Methuen my whole life, I've never really even thought about that. When I drive through Lawrence, down Canal Street, they're standing there with signs. Can you give me a dollar? Can you give me this? Can you give me that?
And most of them aren't from Lawrence. That's what, that's, Lawrence Mayor Rivera's biggest, biggest beef with the homeless in Lawrence is that most of them aren't from Lawrence. And his view, and he's, I don't think he's wrong, although he's wrong about most things, but I don't think he's wrong about this, is that why don't, why don't those communities where these people came from have services for them? And that's why I figured we'd bring it up.
We, we gotta think about this for one minute. I, I'm sorry to take up time.
No, no, it's fine.
These guys that are hustling, these panhandlers, right there on the sides of the street, and look, and I'm not putting anybody down, right? But they can sit there and they can collect a hundred bucks a day or 80 bucks a day. They can't go anywhere to work for, what type of money is offered to these people? You know what rents are out there? You know what it costs them? You know what I mean?
1,200 for a one bedroom in Lawrence.
Okay, so, so what shot do these people have if they went to work at McDonald's or Burger King or Game Hut? Look, I'm not putting any of those places down, by the way. I'm just saying, that's what's, that's the reality of what's happening here. We need to take a look at everything as a whole. I mean, look at, I mean, you got a lot of people that are making a lot of money in Methuen. We need to start sharing. I mean, not, we're not asking anybody to take donations here, you know what I mean? For the shelter or anybody, I mean, there's gotta be some point where you gotta be human about all of this, you know what I mean? I mean, these people, I don't think they wanna be out on the streets panhandling, looking for money. I think they'd rather be supporting themselves, living in homes or, or living in shelters. But we do have a place in Methuen, it's called Haven of Hope. It used to be the old Montgomery School. Now that is a place where the females get to go in there and it's a safe place for them that are living on the street. They take them in, they try to do the right thing by them.
Mostly battered women though, right?
Yes.
Right, or, or addiction, or an addiction issue. So I think, so thinking of that, so Methuen is stepping up a little bit where they probably get some great tax incentives for moving in there or whatnot. I really don't know, you know, the particulars of that, but I mean, that, that is a place that's in place right now, right? So if you had a couple more of those, then maybe that's the answer. But that's a great idea. I think that something like that really should be brought up.
Jerry wants in on this.
Um, I believe that's what we should have, we should do. Haven of Hope is an amazing place. I've gone in there and I've spoke with the, the women there. But it all comes down to the money and we're dealing with outrageous budgets going on and we need to stop paying these high salaries for a lot of brass and that money could go somewhere to help with the homeless or the addiction, so they have somewhere to go and they're not going to Lawrence. But we're not, it's, you're right, we're not helping anyone around that needs that kinda help and with the salaries out of control, how can we help them? So where do you go from there when we're already in such a mess?
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna jump in. Bill Bryant, it, it goes back to the, the development of businesses. If, if folks are down on their luck and don't have a job and we're bringing businesses in, there, there's a perfect match. My concern is we have a track, we have a city-owned tennis court, we have zero basketball courts. We can't even take care of the things that we're charging the school system to use, we're not even taking care of those. So it goes back to, why am I running for city council? Cause those are the answers that I want. When we're shaping the budget, I don't wanna answer to the west end to say, we're gonna raise taxes and, and don't, this isn't to say, I don't wanna help the homeless, but we're not even stable yet as a city government in taking care of our infrastructure. So how do we then turn around and start programming? My question is, where's the federal and the state money that supports Lawrence with these programs? Why are we not accessing that? We're a gateway city. We are a city. I, I get it, Methuen's a town and it's been a town for a long time. I wanna feel like I, I live in a town as well, but the fact is I live in a city. Why are we not accessing these type of city funds from the state and federal government to support these programs instead of tax burden on the same people over and over, over again, which are the residents?
It's an excellent, it's an excellent point, but we gotta go, let somebody else in cause you had two on this. Go ahead, Mike.
Yeah, Mike Samard. The biggest thing homelessness is that it's, it's, it's the underlying problem, which is opioid addiction. That's, that's why most people are homeless. That's why most people go to a neighboring community because it's readily available. But I think we have to fight that and we have to get state and federal money, like Bill said, that's the only way we're gonna do it. We can't afford to fight homelessness on, on a, on a local level. We need state, we need grant writers, we need people that can come in and that can, that can get money and that we can fight that. Because without, you know, overcoming the opioid addiction, it's not gonna work. It's just getting worse and worse and worse. And you see it and I see it, so.
Ally, we're gonna give you as much time as you want, cause everybody else had a lot of time.
All right, so first off, I feel like Methuen puts a lot of money into everything they do. For example, they actually just redid their basketball courts and the football field recently and they redid the paving for the school. So this is, I'm a little enlightened, I guess, with this issue because it never really occurred to me. I think that we do have a lot of abandoned buildings that we could probably like transform into a shelter. I'm not sure how Lawrence does it, if it's strictly government, or if the town pitches in, or how that works, or if it's volunteering, but I mean...
I'll give you more time, but I just want, just for, for clarification. The city of Lawrence does nothing for the homeless. The city of Lawrence spends not one dime on the homeless. The, there's one, there's one shelter, the Daybreak Homeless Shelter, they get state funds, they get no federal funds, they've never even heard from Elizabeth Warren ever. Bread and Roses runs on private donations, Cor Unum runs basically from the money from St. Patrick's Church. So there really aren't a lot of grants that come in from the federal government. There's very little grants that come in from the state. And that's one of the reasons why you see the panhandlers out on the street, because they, they don't have the services, but everybody's going there, because that's, A, what Mike said, that's where the opioids are, but also that's where all the other homeless people are. And when you're homeless, you go where the other homeless people are, so you can say, hey, where can I, where can I go eat? Where can I go get? So I'm going to give you as much time as you want, I'm sorry.
Um, okay, well, that actually answered one of my questions. But, um, so, like, we have churches in our city, and I think we, a lot of residents are pretty charitable, so I don't see why the community shouldn't step up and make efforts to, I mean, if not start, like, a shelter, to at least fundraise money to help, because it, that is true. Like, Methuen residents that are homeless are going to Lawrence, that, I wasn't really aware of that. I mean, it shouldn't burn in Lawrence. However, I do think any government would be a little skeptical of giving us money, since we just took out a four million dollar loan. So it sounds like we can't really manage our money, so I'm not really sure why they would give us more money for other issues. And I think another issue on this is tolerance. So, like, when California has a lot of homeless issues, the community, it's either they're tolerant or they're not. So if they're not tolerant, they're calling the cops, and then they're, they're forcing the homeless to move. So they're, so I'm guessing that's probably part of the problem. So if that is part of the problem, I mean, it's kind of a tough situation, because I mean, you don't necessarily want people who are living on the streets, I guess, around your house, especially if you think they might be, like, addicted to drugs. But it's just kind of like a double-edged sword. You also want them to be safe, and you want to take care of these people. So I guess you have to use tolerance in a way where you can find them an alternative that's safe for you and safe for them. So maybe starting up something and getting the churches involved in the community and other fun, I don't know, other methods of getting money so, to work on that.
Uh, we want to remind everybody that this debate is sponsored by Royal House of Roast Beef. Great roast beef, great, uh, great clam rolls, my favorites. Dawn Signetec, Rich and Abby LaRochelle, and Rich is actually here, thanks for coming, Rich. And an anonymous donor, as well as a good friend, Angelo over there at A&amp;M Auto Body on South Broadway in Lawrence. If something happens to your car, you get a ding, you get a scratch, you get into an accident, bring it to him. I got into an accident when I was doing a live one night chasing police cars. I think I was chasing Mike Samad, actually. Um, and somebody, some, somebody T-boned me, and, and I brought my car to A&amp;M Auto Body, and three weeks later, I got it back, and you couldn't even tell that it was in an accident, so you should bring it to them. The school department was mentioned. One of the things that bothers me about what happened with Judy Scannell, the school department, the four million dollars that they were in the red, is that when the city council, which I think did an amazing job going line by line through this last budget, they went line through line in public so that everybody could see what it was that they were spending on in each department. And, you know, at one point, I think somebody was questioning how many pencils we have. I thought that was awesome, because it was a great learning thing for the public to know where their tax dollars are going. School department didn't do that. School department didn't come before the city council and go line by line. So one of the reasons I believe that they went into, they went into the red, is because the school committee wasn't really keeping an eye on the way the spending was going. And the city council, which is supposed to be the stopgap, city council still votes on the school budget, didn't have access to those numbers. Can you guys each talk about what you thought about what happened with the schools? And as a councillor, how would you stop it from happening again? Anyone?
I'll, I'll jump in. Bill Bryant, I, I think, once again, communication. I'm going to agree with you. I, I can't say that I've agreed with every councillor over the last, you know, year and a half, but I will say, they went detail by detail. I mean, there was a...
And it was painful, but it was great to see.
I hear you, but, you know, even the trash deal that, that was kind of blown up and segregated into trash and recycling, that was because they took the time to go through it. But that's not 100% their responsibility. That's the expectation of the department to give them those facts. So the fact that this present city council demonstrated, hey, if you're not going to give us the facts, we're going to go through, and we're going to go line by line and do that, I think sent a message that if we do that, people should start losing their jobs. If they're going to be hiding money and misrepresenting what's going on, that equals you not doing your job correctly. But going back to the school department, I think having that open communication between the elected school committee body that's responsible for that one entire budget, i- it's, like, we were talking before, Frank, it's a series of errors that happened. And, and how did it get that way? To blame it on the city council, I have a hard time with that, because they were expecting the information to come that was accurate, and, and to be able to be updated on a monthly basis, and it appears they weren't. And I think that's the expectation.
And I know, I know I get no opinion in this, because I don't live in Methuen, but I sat on the school committee in Lawrence, and if I was sitting on the city council and I wasn't getting the information that I wanted, I would vote a no on every single budget until we got the information that we wanted. Anybody?
Didn't councillors refuse to get that, though? I mean, I watched one of those meetings, and one councillor said that he didn't want the budget, because he wasn't going to read it.
Wow.
Because it was too much, like, work. I mean, I agree with you, I think that it is an issue.
Ally, I watched that meeting. I, I think the, the intent behind what he said was, the school budget is much, let's be factual, though, the school budget is much different than the city budget. So the terminology that use, that's used in a school budget reads much differently than the police, the fire, things like that. The personnel reads differently, and I think the point he made was, we need this budget broken down, so we understand the terminology. But to say admin, and you have no other facts, and you don't know what that includes, I think that was the point, is, I can't read this, because I don't understand what's being talked about in the line items. I think that's, that's, that was the, the point of that meeting, because I do, I actually think I was at that meeting.
I don't think that's what he was saying. I, I mean, I don't, it's kind of, I don't want to get into a debate about what someone else was saying, but he pretty much said that it was, like, he didn't feel like it was his responsibility, which to some degree, I understand, because they should be giving you a line-by-line item, you shouldn't have to ask for things. Also, the school budget, I guess, it's strange, because the school budget, if you've been watching the recent meetings, not only did no one say anything sooner, people knew about it. Um, no one spoke up. So again, we have accountability. And then, so now, instead of anyone saying, who knew about it, coming forward and saying, yeah, this is what I could have done differently, or I should have spoken up sooner, so that we didn't get so deep in the hole, we now have people saying, well, I mean, I knew about it, but it wasn't really my fault. Well, it is or it isn't. If you knew about it, it falls on your shoulders.
It's your fault.
And not only that, but we also gave back grant money for the schools. Does, that doesn't make any sense. So we took out a loan, but gave back grant money.
Jerry, you've been very quiet.
I know. Um, well, I would want everything broken down, because I would want to know exactly where everything is going. So I wouldn't have voted on anything unless I saw line by line where every penny was going. So I would have to say, I definitely wouldn't vote on anything unless I fully read everything.
Mike Samad, I just think it's been a comedy of errors in city government when it comes to the police contract and the school budget. And I think people need to be held accountable, and, and I, I welcome more state oversight so we can avoid that problem once again, because no one's an expert when it comes to reading budgets, especially as big as a school department, where you have state funds. So I, I welcome oversight where people are held accountable, and people who don't know how to make decisions are not making the decision. People who do know will make those decisions, so I welcome state oversight.
Frank?
I think that there's a school committee in place, they get elected, right? And I think that, uh, the burden should be on their shoulders. I mean, that's what they get elected for, to watch the monies, right? I mean, so, somebody should be asking those board members, hey, what happened? You know what I mean? Somebody should be accountable for it. And, look, we don't want to point fingers at anybody, I don't think that's the answer to anything. I think...
I actually like doing that.
Yeah, well, I don't think...
Someone's got to be accountable.
I was waiting for that.
And even, you know, as far as, even, you know, with the police contract, I don't think pointing fingers is the way out of this. I think sitting down and coming to the table and saying, this is what's reasonable, this is what's not reasonable, and, and getting to, getting to, uh, to move forward with it, you know what I mean? And a- as well as the school committee, I mean, I think Judy did a great job. I mean, me personally, I had some interaction with her. Did I know her personally? No. But I thought she ran a tight ship over there, so I kind of felt bad about what happened. But, you know, nobody was, nobody was too quick to, to kick her out of the doors, right, when they had that little, when she had the issue there with the education, right? But what happened when we ran four million dollars over, you know what I mean?
Right.
I mean, everybody's still sitting on that board now. I find it, you know what I mean, a little, you know, look, we got her, let's, let's toss her to the wolves now, right?
That's what's happening.
But what happened to the rest of the board that were there, that watched the budget go through?
I still want to know, and it, it's, it's not a debate question, but just a side note, I still want to know how it is that she was a super, she was a principal for 10 years with no certification, and the search committee put her name forward to be a superintendent in the first place? I mean...
But I think that's happened in time through the whole city. I mean, if we look at every department and, and see there are all their certifications, then you know what? Then talk to me. I think Judy did a great job for what she had to handle with this school, and it's a lot easier to point the finger at somebody that's no longer in that position, I'm sorry, position. So it's like, again, no one's accountable, so let's throw it on Judy, blame her, and walk away, and think that that's okay, and it's not.
Right.
I'm sorry.
So I definitely have a different opinion on that. I think that, I, I understand that she's a good person, but she lied, and then when she was asked about it, she lied. So I'm sorry, you get fired. If you do that in any other circumstance, you get fired.
Well, we don't know if she lied, do we?
She lied. People asked her, and she lied. She said that it lapsed, which is a lie. And I mean, I understand what you guys are saying, but the, so, I guess what I would bring to the table is, like, you have to separate your pers, like, your personal feelings, where, like, if this was a real setting, and, well, it is a real setting, but like, if this was your privately owned company, and someone lied to you about their certification for 10 years, and then you were, you could have been liable at that point, and you're just supposed to, like, let them go, say, oh, well, you did good, here's your retirement, like, you're all set. Like, that's kind of absurd. And on top of that, like, I, we, I agree with what you said about checking everyone's credentials, because she wasn't the only person. We also had a city engineer who wasn't, who, who got the job, and they knew that he wasn't even, like, an engineer, so...
Well, this is what I'm saying.
Yeah, this is an ongoing issue, and I agree with you. It, like, you need to make sure that people are holding the qualifications and certifications that they need to be in that job, because they're getting paid based on holding these. So other people could have been in that position who earned it, and I'm not saying that she didn't earn it with her experience, but if the job requires you to hold a certification, you need to hold the certification. There's no loopholes.
Mike, what would happen if you walked into the Methuen Police Department tomorrow, you weren't certified, you didn't go through the police academy, you got, you put on a uniform, you got into the car, and you went out and you started arresting somebody, and they found out you weren't really a cop?
Who are you speaking about, Tom? Let's be honest, yeah.
We're talking about, I'm just, I'm talking analogy with Judy, with Judy Scannell.
Well, let me just speak about the education part. My, my wife is a guidance counselor at the Greater Lawrence Vogue, and every year, she stresses out, because she has to stay current on a certification. She knows exactly what she needs to do. She has a master's plus 45, and, and she's very educated. But she was stressed out last year, because she thought she was going to lose her job because she, if she didn't get this certain certification. So she knows, and she's only a guidance counselor, so if you can imagine a superintendent of the school department not knowing it is a cop out. So, like, like Ally said, we have to hold people accountable. Thank you for your service, but I'm sorry, you're fired.
I'm sorry, but, so, getting to that, Frank Yallow, so we did dismiss her, or whatever ended up happening.
They allowed her to retire.
Okay, but that, but, so you think that she was the answer for all the problems, the four million dollars? I mean, I understand the certifications. Look, I have certifications that have to be upheld every two years, okay? I get that point of it. So the elephant came, the elephant came in, I mean, it is what it is, she's gone. She, she did a decent job, it is what it is, but that wasn't the answer to the four million dollars, you know what I mean? They all knew, the board members were there, somebody had to have known, and when it gets to a million, somebody should, hey, we're a million. Okay, let's close our eyes, let's go to two million. I mean, come on, man.
Well, if you've watched the recent, um, school committee councils, she knew about it, and then I, I think it was Nick DeZoglio knew about it, and he went to the mayor. So it doesn't sound like everyone knew about it, maybe they should have, I don't know. But, I mean, she did know about it, and she knew about it to a point where it sounds like she could have done things to help the situation, where instead, it sounds like she was blowing it off, saying, well, it'll fit, work itself out. I don't know how four million dollars works itself out.
No, but you just can't assume that...
Go ahead, Bill.
I'm not assuming, I watched the video.
No, I'm talking about her opinion, not the, what you're talking about.
So we could do another 20 more minutes on shoulda, coulda, woulda.
You guys should have kicked in more money.
What, what we need to talk about, what we need to talk about is, how do we make sure that doesn't happen again? And it goes back to the infrastructure and the communication. And my fear is, you know, a lot of people are like, well, I want an entire new city council, I want an entire new... Just be careful what you ask for, because if the mistakes that are being made aren't kept, and, and we all talk about history, you learn from it, so it doesn't repeat itself.
Right.
That's my concern. So I want to make sure that people that get elected have the knowledge, and have the understanding, and have the, the information from the past, so you put place, uh, structures and, and things in place so it does not happen again. So as a city council member, going to those meetings, listening to it, I'm going to make sure, if I am on city council, I'm going to want a, a budget, um, you know, update from the school committee on a monthly basis to know where they're at. That, that's what I thought was going on to the school committee. And, and as a city councillor, I would expect that information to come if they're requesting money. And I think that's the part, that the current structure is, if a department needs money, they ask the city council for it, and then they ask questions. I don't believe they were asking the city council for money.
And I think Jessica, Councilor Jessica Finicaro, asked for, like, a monthly statement or a bimonthly statement, and the council said, no! They didn't want the responsibility. We've got, we've got about four minutes left, and we can go a little bit over, because I want to give each of you guys time, um, to ask people at home, tell them who you are, tell them why you want their vote, and in your, in your closing statements, um, talk about what your number one priority is if you're going to get elected. And anybody that wants to go first, I'll let you guys in, or I'll pick somebody.
I'll go first. Um, so my name's Ally Safi again. So I'm running to try to, it's hard to fix problems that are in the past, and I agree that we have to move on, but you can't fix anything unless you confront it. There are uncomfortable conversations that have to be had, and you have to hold people accountable. I understand that that is an unlikely, an un, I don't know, favorable opinion, but if you don't hold people accountable, it's going to happen again, because they got away with it. If I robbed a bank and I got away with it, do you think I would do it again? Or do you think Mike would do it? Because he'd be like, she got, she got away with it, why wouldn't I? Like, I'm not saying you have to, like, ruin their lives or put them in jail, but you do have to acknowledge that these people knew and did something wrong, and that in order to fix it, we have to have a, a government, and we have to have different communities, well, committees and councils that are going to check each other's balancing, how they're doing budgeting, and that they're all up to certification on their jobs. Like, we can't just say, well, it is what it is. It isn't what it is, because if that's how we're going, I would not expect that in five years, we have another superintendent without the qualifications, because we already set the standard. There's nothing, we're not, we're not forcing anyone to rise above the standard. We set a standard, and we went below it. So unless you want to keep going lower, you have to raise the standards. So anyways, so I am very adamant on holding people accountable, not in an aggressive way, but just in a way that makes it productive for the future. And I also think that you have to have uncomfortable conversations, you have to be willing to do it. You have to be able to separate your personal views and the reality of the situation you're in. Um, so that's my thing.
Mike Samad, I'll go next, we're going over, if that's easier. I've said before, these are tough times, and we have to make tough decisions. I'm not doing this to make friends, I'm not doing this to be the...
You're not going to make any friends, trust me.
Oh, I know that, I know that. But that's what we need. We, we need oversight, we need someone who can, and who can work together as a team and get past all the, all the petty bickering that we've been doing a lot, finger pointing, name-calling, and, and quite frankly, it's been, it's been disgusting. So I'd like to be that person to, to help the city council move forward. Adventure, I'd like to go to a, more of a city administrator, because I think that's what we need. It's, what's wrong with this picture when you have the mayor who's making eighty thousand dollars a year, and you have a department head making four hundred thousand dollars a, a year? There's something wrong there. So I think we need to get an administrator in here who knows how to run a city, who knows how to run ci, uh, city finances, government finances, who can work on contracts, and maybe both, maybe have a mayor to do the, the employee oversight and, and the ceremonial stuff, but we need someone who can, you know, knows what they're doing.
Lowell does that. They have a city mayor that cuts ribbons, and then they have a city administrator that runs the show. Frank?
Perfect example.
First of all, I made a big mistake when we started this off. I didn't say hi to my wife and kids.
Okay, hi, hi, wife and kids.
And my mother up from Florida.
And you asked if we could do a shout-out.
Right, right, and I didn't say hi to my mother up from Florida. So anyways, uh, it's, it's accountability with me, you know what I mean? It's accountability. I sat on the Housing Authority Board, and I watched the way things, things are done, and, uh, it's full accountability there. We know where our money's going, we know who's getting it, and we know, you know, we, we did, we put out search committees to get the best possible directors that come in and stuff like that.